I'd like to welcome you out this evening and welcome those that are here with us. The City Youth Council is here tonight, and any of the other visitors are here with us. So we will start with an invocation, and oh, before we start, will you please silence your phones if you haven't already? Thank you. So we will start with the invocation and pledge allegiance, and that will be given by Councilman Swanson tonight.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the chance to be here. We're grateful for the community in which we live. We're grateful that we're able to live amongst each other. We're grateful for the pride that we have in our wonderful community. We're thankful to live under a system of government that allows us to participate. We pray for civil hearts and minds and voices tonight as we make important decisions. In this we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go into the consent agenda. Do I have a motion or to consider the minutes from December 4th meeting, City Council meeting minutes? Ruben?
Mayor Protem, I'd move that we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Okay, we have approval by Mayor Swanson and, or Councilman Swanson.
No, 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 that's why we're here tonight. No, 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 no.
Okay, my first of many tonight. And then was seconded by Blake.
Just Blake.
Just Blake. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty, then we'll go.
Any opposed?
Okay, then we'll go into our public comments, and I would like to just ask each of you, considering the size of the crowd, if you have comments tonight, you would at least keep them to five minutes or less, and also just one time up, because you'll have an opportunity at the end for more public comments at the end, okay? So it's open now for public comments.
Dale Anderson, 940 East, 2600 North, and I'm not going to comment on the candidates. I'm going to, you're going to get plenty of that, and I'm going to make a comment about the amphitheater, but it's not going to be controversial. A couple of, just in the last week or two, and I've sent emails to some of the council members and talked to some of them, and I was at the amphitheater one day. I just walked over there and looked, and there was a family that was sledding on the hill on the west side of the seating area down into the bowl. The problem is, there's that steel handrail that goes down along that sidewalk, and there's the fence posts, and they were sledding headfirst down under the handrail and between the posts. So I've brought it to your attention because it could be potentially a liability issue that I thought that is one of the most dangerous things I've seen somebody do with their kids. And I also wanted to bring it up because I was really appalled that a parent standing there would be laughing and enjoying seeing his kids do that. That kind of brings to us our responsibility as parents and citizens of this city, not to just rely on our leaders to take care of us, but we have to take responsibility, make this thing work, protect our families, and not just be spoon-fed or babysat by our leaders. So I just wanted to bring that to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Keith Ashdown from 193 East Pleasant Drive. Nobody else wants to talk. I guess I'll talk till maybe other people come. No, I'm real sure. I just hope that you councilmen take all the applicants seriously. Mr. Chugg has done a fine job. I have no complaints about him, but also there are other people here that I hope you look at them and take it seriously and take their qualifications. There may be somebody here that's more qualified, and I hope you seriously look at that and take their applications, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
We live at 3644 North, 575 East. I think it's wonderful that we have a group of candidates that are applying for this position. They all seem like high-quality people, personally, but what occurred to my wife and I as we discussed this is that we have a period right now, an unexpected event has precipitated this, and the only person that I know has been in this position and that I can actually look at from a performance basis, and the only one I've known from my contacts in that regard is Mr. Chugg, and I think he's been a steady hand at the helm. I think he's carried forward some of the dispositional things that made me, that attracted me to support Mayor Taylor. I see those qualities in Mayor Chugg. I would like to see all the interested candidates and any others who might want to run air their qualifications and their visions for the city in a full election campaign. I learned so much about Brent during the campaign that he ran for his office initially, and it really opened my eyes and made me aware in meetings that were held in people's homes that we attended, one in our own home where we were able to have a one-on-one with the candidates in a kind of an intimate setting. I think that's invaluable. I would really like to see that happen. I'd like to see Mayor Chugg remain in his position as appointed for the next year, let the dust settle. As we gear up to November, we'll have a full chance to examine and inquire of the candidates who want to have that position, and I fully intend to take advantage of that, but I'm really content with the way things are going right now. You guys have provided a wonderful government, a model for small-city government that I'm really proud of, and I'd just like to see it just kind of proceed forward, working well as it's doing now for the next few months, and then let us get to know all these other candidates more fully and examine their qualifications and their visions for the city more fully before we make a decision by voting. So I would, I would like to see Mayor Chugg appointed to continue on in his interim capacity until the election is held in November. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Linda Brinton, 100 East, 1700 North. I just want to kind of tell a short story. I met a lady in Smith's about three weeks before Christmas. Don't know her name, don't know where she lives, just she's in North Ogden. We talked about North Ogden and the trials we've been through, and that, she says, "Don't you think the last three or four years our city's been separated?" And I thought about it, and I says, "We have. We need some unity again. If you ran for City Council, please stay on the City Council. That's where we need you to be, where you want to be. Let's start out new with a new mayor, and let's pick one that is not pro-this or pro-that, but right down the center of the line where they'll listen to both sides and choose what's best for our city and the people within the city, not emotions." So I just want you guys to have an open mind to do what's best for the city, not what, who you like best, or the agenda that you think they have that you want. We want to be neutral as much as we can, get the city back together.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to what everybody's here for. So I'm going to, we will, I'm going to turn the time over to Annette Spindlove, our city recorder, and also she is our election official.
I just wanted to give everyone an outline and how this is going to proceed. First of all, when I place the applicant's names on the agenda, I placed them according to the 2018-2019 master ballot position list that the Lieutenant Governor's Office puts out. I thought that would be the most fair, and so as you go down this list, there's different letters, and then the numerals, like number one was the letter F, and two X, three is C, and it's your surname, and so we had three Cs, Casey, Chugg, and Christiansen, and because I had three, then I went to the second letter, and on this list, A came before H. And then when I went to Chugg, U came before R. So that was the order they were in, and then the next was Anderson, the As, and then Huntsman. And so that's what I thought was the fair way, and that's how I did that. So right now, we're going to take the applicants back into the back room and let Mr. Casey stay here. He'll be first to be interviewed. You have a list of questions. Each one of you will take one question. After everyone's interviewed, I'll get back up and explain the process. We encourage those that are going in to be interviewed that they turn off their phones and they're not watching YouTube, so it doesn't give them a heads-up on the questions. I can't stop them from doing that, but we encourage them to do that. So right now, I'll take all the candidates back in this back room, except for Sean Casey. And Sean, you can step up to the line.
Annette, real quick, after the interview, do the candidates go back there?
No, they're going to come back in here. They'll all be.
So like when we're interviewing, done with Sean, will he go back there? Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi.
I will.
Let's give them some time to get back.
That's true.
Down the hall, let us know when they're in the room.
We have to, we have to have Annette come back, don't we?
She likes to be in the room to take minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Let's wait for her to get back then.
So while we're waiting, first name, okay, to everybody?
What, you calling us or we calling you?
I'm good with Sean.
Mr. Casey, yeah.
I prefer.
Yeah, Carl.
Good.
Blake is great.
Yep.
But we may call you Mr. Casey just for fun.
It's all right. It's not derogatory.
Just another minute. So since I am the temporary mayor pro tem, tonight I get to start, so I get the easy question. So tell us a little bit about yourself, Sean.
A little bit. Right, there's five minutes.
This much.
Lived here the vast majority of my life. I have wife Stephanie, three kids, and I like a lot of things. I'm currently a little bit damaged, as you guys know. I mean, relative information, I've been an entrepreneur most of my life. I have managed several businesses. The last one, one problem I have had to bring up issues is I'm a little bit of a fox. I start projects, and I'm easily distracted, and I go for another project. In 2000, I decided to be a hedgehog, and I have been with my current company since 2000, and we're in the audio trade. We design, manufacture, and occasionally sell loudspeaker systems, cable assemblies. I work with my wife Stephanie. I've got two of my kids that put in a little bit of part-time labor as well. The other is going to the University of Utah. It's a really wide-open question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Swanson?
Sure. Sean, what motivated you to run for mayor?
Initially, thinking about it, it was a platform to push buttons, and then it evolved. So I have been a button pusher for about a year now, as you guys know, a little bit of an agitator, in a good way. I think agitation is a, is a good way of finding truth, and I think we've been struggling to find what is a need and what is a want within the city. As I thought more about it, I thought, you know, the best thing that I have is my experience with First Amendment issues, and I think that a little bit of direction concerning censorship and freedom of speech, the free exchange of ideas, thank you, that is, that is something that I am very passionate about. As elected officials at a city level, we really have only one, so you're all sworn to uphold and protect the Constitution preamble, the method and mechanism section, which is beautiful, but we really have no control over, and then we have the Bill of Rights. And within the Bill of Rights, really, it comes down to that one thing, and it's fitting that the First Amendment is freedom of speech, and I have a lot of experience dealing in the entertainment industry for the, for my entire adult life. I have some expertise in this area that I think can be beneficial to the city. The city is running quite well in my book, the things that the city does that are needs, garbage sewer, water, trash, or roads, city parks, okay, maybe we could improve a little bit here and there on the city parks, but our city runs pretty good. It's the, the, when we stray outside of the needs of the city, that things get a little I'm trying to be brief. If you'd like me to expand, I'm happy to drill down.
You're five minutes.
All right.
Thank you, Sean.
What do you, what do you see as a future vision for North Ogden City regarding residential development and commercial development?
The needs of the city should be directed by the citizens, the residents of the city, so property owners have precedence. So my vision would be to work with the people who live here now to find out what they want, what their needs are, and engage as many as possible. So at the city level, our form of government is very democratic. Our representation is very, very much us, and our vote is individual, and it's counted as an individual. So I would treat things as a democracy. I would, again, engage everybody to find out what they wanted. On the commercial side, the commercial property, that's kind of the purview of the commercial sector, the private businesses. If they want to come here, great, we should find out who wants to come here, but to actively go out to Whole Foods and say, "Hey, Whole Foods," you've seen the South Park episode, right? Anyway, we, that's not really our job. It's if they want to come and they fit our code, you know, they get, they get a shake at it. We can be active in trying to get those companies and businesses that we want, but, but again, it's a democratic process in my, in my book for a city.
Okay, Sean, when I first threw my hat in for City Council, people said, "Why would you want to subject yourself to so much scrutiny?" And so my question would be, how well do you handle conflicts and complaints when they come in from citizens?
I'd like to say I'm coded in Teflon. It's not quite that good. I, I look at conflicts and problems and obstacles as opportunity. So without problems, life's pretty boring. I'm not here to make problems, but problems will come up. Plows might break down. We might have a garbage issue that you guys went through with the recycling, for example. You should know your facts, and you should enlist the help of experts, true experts. So I wouldn't make decisions that would be controversial, I would hope, because I would be leaning on expertise from within the city or even outside the city, and I would try to use a degree of science to understand the problem and then also to select a solution. But choosing a solution is oftentimes, with flexibility, is oftentimes the, it doesn't matter what the, the answer is, as long as we are flexible to, you pick a direction, you go with it, and you amend as needed as the community demands.
Great, thank you.
Or as the problem demands. We might not fully understand the problem initially, so as we become more acquainted with whatever problem it may be, solutions will present themselves, as long as we've got our head spirit on straight and we're looking at this rationally.
Great, thank you. Okay, Sean, I don't know if you know this, but we've had some controversy in the city. Little bit, little bit.
I'm part of that.
So my question actually has to do a little bit with that, so, and it's about the amphitheater.
Yeah.
And the question is, the amphitheater at Barker Park was completed stage one, or phase one of the construction. We're getting ready to start phase two. What do you see moving forward as the amphitheater? And then also, how would you handle both the positive and the negative? Because we hear both of them with the amphitheater.
Yeah, so the city has gotten itself into a pickle, just like when you buy, when you marry and you didn't vet your significant other's musical preference, you're going to have problems. So we have a music venue, largely it's a music venue, and we'd like to say it's for plays, but plays don't draw like music draws, statistically speaking. So we're going to have problems with the amphitheater. So we do have some clear guidance from our Constitution regarding the amphitheater, and that is that we, that Congress, that lawmakers shall make no law concerning our freedom of speech, and the reason for that is the free exchange of ideas. So I'm in favor of promotion of free exchange of ideas. I think that entertainment is definitely outside of the purview of city government or government generally, quite conservative in that regard. However, it's built, and there are problems with the deed, need versus want. It's clearly delineated in the deed that if the needs of the city change, the use of that property can change. However, an amphitheater is clearly not a need. The other problem with the deed of that particular item, of that property, is that it is supposed to be, it is guaranteed to be passive, and you can have a passive amphitheater, but we did not build a passive amphitheater. We built an amphitheater that has the capacity for a 10,000-person concert or play, and it was built in a residential area. We're always going to have those residents on that roadway and, and others in the community even. I mean, Leyton Amphitheater is heard two miles away, and they have a fairly strict noise ordinance in place for their amphitheater, yet two miles away, people can hear, still hear clean, clean and clear the performance that is going on. So regardless of what content you pick, others will be offended from the content. So the business plan that we need to wrap the amphitheater in needs to be very clear, and, and then it also needs to give everybody in the community equal opportunity. As Judge Hyde said in that preliminary injunction lawsuit that Ryan attended, Phil attended, Cheryl, I think, attended a few of those, where were you two? Sorry, it wasn't a jab, I was just being funny. He said that it is for all people, you know, so the residents paid for it, all of us paid for it. Lieber County paid for it. Federal funds were also used to purchase the land in the beginning, so it needs to be put into service, and it needs to be used as liberally as we possibly can. We need to also find out what we need to do with the deed. There's, there needs, there's some legal issues we need to address, but we can't just build it and then tear it down and say, "Oh, sorry, everybody, we spent your money, and we just ripped it down." Yeah, so that doesn't work either. That's enough, right? That's enough, yeah.
Cheryl, I think that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, thanks.
See you.
I think you're fine letting him fly.
Okay. At the end's great, thank you. You don't bite too hard, just a little bit. So tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, I was born and raised on a farm in Cache Valley, Providence, Utah, and I spent 20, 26 years there, getting my education and working on the farm. After that, I went to work for Del Monte Corporation and spent 23 years there overseeing production of peas, beans, and corn, and then I became the Director of Research in developing new varieties of peas, beans, and corn, plant diagnostics, insect control, and weed control for the corporation. I spent, like I say, the 23 years there, and then, you know, this church called me up and says, "Would you come down and evaluate our product?" And I said, "Yes, I'd be glad to." And so the product wasn't quite as good as I thought it ought to be, and told them what was wrong with it and how to fix it. They called me up a couple of weeks later and says, "Would you come down and go to work for us and you fix it?" So I spent 27 years there overseeing the production of food for the Bishop Storehouse System, as well as other consulting assignments in Mexico, North Korea, Poland, a few places like that, and was in charge also of grain storage facilities. Like I say, after 27 years, I decided to retire and, and then ended up here. I have five boys, 16 grandchildren, one great-grandchild, and a beautiful wife that has supported me all the way through this, and, and I appreciate her.
Thank you.
What motivated you to apply to be mayor?
Well, when I was called in a year ago and asked by Mayor Taylor to stand in for him while he was in Afghanistan, and I'd never entered into the political world before, and having been raised around agriculture, I felt comfortable because if weeds came up, I could pull them out. And so I said to him, I says, "You know, if I wanted to continue to work, I'd have stayed where I was at." And he says, "Well, I'm being deployed, and I wonder if you'd help me out." We'd become acquainted in the Public Works building that we put up here in North Ogden. So I said, "Yes, I would stand in and help him out." And so I found out real quick how big shoes are to fill and still trying to fill them. And then after he was killed in Afghanistan, I was kind of weighing the situation because I knew that in January, that would be the end of my responsibilities as mayor, because he would be back, and of course, that didn't happen, and so I thought it over, I talked with a lot of people, I talked to my wife and employees and so forth, and they... and so forth, and they urged me to continue to stay on the rest of 2019, and so, I applied to stay on.
Thank you.
What do you see as a future vision for North Ogden City regarding residential development and commercial development?
I see the need, you know, based on, North Ogden has become a very progressive city and under the direction of Mayor Taylor. And I've, I've been really inspired by the things that he accomplished in that regard, getting new business located and so forth, and I recognize that we need to have additional business in North Ogden in order to help us with our tax base. So, I would think that we need to work on getting new business and keep it confined to the areas in which we have commercial zoning, and, like I say, continue to pursue business aspirations and get more business here in North Ogden that will provide a quality of life for us.
Brent, over the last year, you've obviously had the opportunity to handle some conflicts and complaints. So, going forward, how would you handle those in the future? What have you learned in the past that will help you in the future with complaints and conflicts?
I think, you know, it was somewhat disturbing to me because I hadn't handled those kind of conflicts before, given the profession that I was, that I had been in over the past 50 years. But recognizing that there were some issues out there on both sides, and I got into the middle of it after it started, and I was kind of fumbling my way around, trying to figure out just exactly how we calm the tide. And I think, looking back, probably spent more time communicating and trying to work with people, work out details and so forth, it might alleviate the situation. But I think communication is the key to help out that situation. Thank you.
I can't write as fast as you talk. Okay. Mr. Chugg, there's been some controversy with Barker Park Amphitheater, as you are well aware. We've completed the first stage of it, and we're now been, as a council, we've said we're ready for the stage two. What do you see moving forward with the amphitheater? And then, how will you handle the negative and positive feedback from the residents?
If I knew the answer to that question, I'd be a lot richer, but nonetheless, we have a nice facility over there. It's a beautiful facility. It's a monument to North Ogden, a monument to those who have worked and planned and developed it. And so, now that it's up to that point, as far as development is concerned, we need to finish it. You don't build a new home and up at bathrooms and interior and this type of thing in it. So, we need to, we need to finish the amphitheater so it becomes functional, and hopefully, everybody will work together to get that done. I, I see that facility to help out those and provide opportunities for those who love the arts, who like to participate in cultural events. We have soccer fields for those who like to do athletics, baseball, basketball, but some individuals, I even have a grandson like this, that he loves to perform and be in plays and so forth. And so, he was in the play that was held there this year, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity for young and old to display their talents.